Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'd please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Susanna Ballard.
Present.
Commissioner Joan DeZerro.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Laird.
Here.
Vice Chair Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Lonnie Stevenson.
Chair Jim Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
Commissioner Mary Costa. Commissioner JP Thornton.
Here.
And Commissioner Philinett.
Okay, Mr. Gilbert, correspondents and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't have any significant actions taken by the city council since our last meeting two weeks ago, so nothing on that end, and we're continuing to make progress with the general plan, which involves you guys, of course, today, and then there's other steps being taken right now behind the scenes, which will be coming out in the next few weeks. So that's all I have for today.
Okay. Minutes of the last meeting, are there any additions, deletions, corrections by commissioners? Anybody at all? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Wilson, a second by Ms. Medley, to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's call for the question.
The motion to approve the minutes passes seven to zero.
Okay, let me start by saying that this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this side or speak, limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than three minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's exceptions and conditions of approval, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove, and I thank you in advance for your cooperation. Today's structure is going to be a little different, I presume, because of the general plan update. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, as you stated, today's hearing is the kickoff meeting for Planning Commission, and the consultants are here in the audience, just want to state that. Every 10 years, state statute requires that a city update its general plan, and that will be next year for us, and thus earlier this year, the city retained Logan Simpson Design Incorporated as our consultant for the process. The process is well underway right now, and the kickoff meeting with you guys falls at a good time. City Council had their kickoff meeting on April 8th, and you'll be seeing a lot of the same presentation materials from the consultants as the city council saw. And again, I want to introduce Terry, our lead, and her team, and she'll be actually doing the presentation from the podium, and the rest of us sit back and watch, and they'll entertain any questions you have at the end.
All right, thank you.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Terry Hogan, and I'm with the firm Logan Simpson, and super excited to be here today to give you your kickoff for your general plan update. So with that, I'm going to hopefully, oh, it works, so we're ahead. Before we get into the agenda, what I'd like to do is just introduce our project team, which is a combination of your city staff, who you know and love, along with our consultant team, so we're working collaboratively together. So you can see our main project team on the left-hand side. With regard to our consultant team, we see ourselves as an extension of your city staff. I'll go ahead and, we have one of our teaming partners here, but I'll go ahead and introduce on behalf of our other teaming partners. Our firm Logan Simpson has been working in planning and development across the Rocky Mountain region for about 35 years, doing general plan updates, comprehensive plan updates. We're a multi-service company, where we work community planning, environmental planning, cultural services, and design, landscape, architecture. I myself have been working in planning and development for about 30 years, born and raised in Phoenix, Arizona, had the opportunity, I heard retirement, I had the opportunity to retire from state service about four years ago, had a chance to work at all different levels of government in Arizona, from the state to the county to the, retired out of the city of Buckeye. So I wasn't ready to retire, jumped into private sector, and it's been an extension of my public sector career to work with cities, towns, and counties, updating their general plans and their comprehensive plans. So I have a real passion for serving the public interest, I'm excited to be here today for that. We have a broad team on Logan Simpson of specialists that work in planning, graphics, mapping services, and all of that. Throughout this process, you'll meet some of those folks, and we'll introduce them as we go. Because of the nature of the general plan and having it be a lot of different topic areas, we bring in our teaming partners to make sure that we have the functional expertise to do your, to do your general plan. So with us today, and I'm going to let Rusty give a quick introduction himself, we have retired Colonel Mitchell here from Peacemaker Aviation.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Excited to be here, failing retirement, retired out of the active-duty Air Force, 22 years, went to United Airlines, retired out of them after 22 years. While I was doing that, I was working at Luke on community planning and development compatibility for Luke Air Force Base, did that for almost 20 years, currently with the United, and I'm supposed to be retired now, and I'm busier than I ever was, so. Really excited, when we interviewed for, to get the contract, I just couldn't express enough how excited I was to work up here, because I love this airport, and talked to General Kane and got to know him real well, so excited to kick this off and be working with you for the next year, year and a half or so.
Thanks, Rusty. Perfect, okay. In addition to our military and airport airspace professional, we have two other teaming consultants, they're not here today, but we have Kim Lee Horn, who's working on our public services, water resources, and transportation circulation components of this plan. Chris is Joannie's, you'll meet him along the way, and then we have Elliot D. Pollack and Company, they're our economists, so they're working on economic growth as well as housing. And Rick Merritt will be another person that you meet along the way, along with his staff. So with that, we'll go on to the agenda. What I like to do in these kickoffs, and I know that all of you are part of this process and are aware of what a general plan is, but I'd like to go over just briefly, from a 30,000-foot standpoint, what is the general plan, why are we doing this, for the benefit not only of the membership of the Planning Commission, but for anyone else that's listening in as well. So we'll talk about that, we're going to talk about our strategy or our public education plan for public engagement, that's a huge component of this process, go over the process and the schedule and kind of let you know where we're at along the way, and then talk about next steps and open it up for questions. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, are there any questions to start with?
Any questions of presenter? Go ahead.
All right, here we go. All right, so, general plan, what is the general plan? We look at the general plan as it's a 30,000-foot policy document, it's the community's vision for growth, sometimes it's called the blueprint or the roadmap for growth for a community. As Mr. Gilbert said, this is a required, statutory required document that has to be updated every 10 years, and so it's, there are several components of a general plan. It's comprehensive in nature, so you get that 30,000-foot policy sort of thing, it's general, it's comprehensive in terms of it requires a lot of different elements, and I'll talk about those elements that are required. And then it's long-range, so it's future vision, it's looking out into the future 10, 15 years, and sometimes build out. A lot of times, general plans get confused with zoning, there's a couple of things on there that it's not, it's not a zoning map, although sometimes it gets confused for that. It can be changed, you know this, because you have folks come to you with rezones and have to change the general plan, so there's mechanism in there for it to be changed prior to those 10-year updates. It's not specific, and it's not a capital improvement plan, but a lot of times it will drive your capital improvement plan. Planning hierarchy, I like to show this exhibit, because it really shows where the general plan fits into the scheme of all the other planning documents that you may or might, may not deal with as a commission. General plan is that foundation of the pyramid, so everything from there gets more specific, and everything is an implementation of your general plan. So as you go up that pyramid, you see your zoning corridor plans or area plans, sometimes we will start seeing the regulations in that area, so subdivision regulations, zoning codes, that implements your community vision, your site plans is the next level, preliminary plots, final plots that you see implementing that, and then going into your building plans, the built environment with your CFO. All is meant to implement your community's vision. Make sense? All right. And again, we've said this, but, oop, why update the general plan? So there's your general plan on the right-hand side, you can see it was adopted in 2015, 2016, it was ratified by your community, which means it was approved by your community, council adopts, you guys recommend, council adopts, community said, yes, we love it. So that's what we're hoping for this process as well, right? That's what we want to do. So it's required by state, that's the easy answer, but the real answer, and the reason why your department and our project team has moved this forward as an update, is because we want to take the temperature, the vision, and the values of your community, including, of course, all of you, to make sure that it's still within the community's vision. So yes, you could come back and just adopt what you have already, but the decision was made to make sure that this is in concert with your community's vision and values, so hence why we go into a lot of public engagement for this, for this update. Here are the topics that are covered, there's different levels in the statute for different populations that communities have, every city and town has to do a general plan update, your counties have to do a comprehensive plan update every 10 years, and there's thresholds for what's included in that. And you can see all general plans require land use and circulations, that's the basis of what's in a plan, and then as you go up in population, you require on the left-hand side, your open space, growth areas, cost of development, water resources, environmental planning, and then because you are nearly 60,000 in population, over that 50,000 benchmark, you're requiring to have all of those other elements on the right-hand side. As we go through this process, we might theme those, combine those, but all of those topic areas have to be addressed, and there's certain criteria in the statute that has to be met for those. Okay, so what is in your general plan? I like to go through this just to give you an idea of the structure. We have a vision statement, this is your actual vision statement that was adopted and approved and ratified. It's long, what we're doing at this point, which is not a bad thing, a lot of community, a lot of communities, a lot of cities and towns have long vision statements, we're not Nike, so it's not just, you know, two words, a lot of times, there's just a lot to say about a community. We're looking at getting some input on that vision statement, we have a, I know a lot of you have probably seen the first questionnaire that we have out there, so we're asking the community, does this still resonate with you? As we go through this process, we'll workshop, we'll do different workshops to get to a vision statement. Sometimes we see vision statements are pulled apart into guiding principles, we haven't really thought about that or decided that yet, but sometimes you can have guiding principles that are like aspirations for your different themed areas. Suffice to say, the vision is overarching vision for the plan, everything else stems from that, goals, policies, implementation and all of that, so everything stems from that overarching vision. There are three main components of your general plan, two are required, one is not. This is your future land use map that you have right now, you guys, I'm sure you've seen this many, many times before, this is future land use designations. A lot of times, this map will get confused with zoning, because it's colorful and people think this is zoning, it's not. So this is your community's vision of what they want in the future, designated as different types of land uses, and you can see on the right-hand side the different land uses of residential, non-residential resort, and when somebody comes into your town or to your city and says, I want to do a rezone, the statute requires it to be in conformance with this map, so that's why you'll see general plan amendments and folks having to amend this if it's not in concert, and that's, that's one of the ways that this plan gets implemented, is through rezoning actions. So that's your future land use map, that's what we're looking at in terms of updating, is that still meeting the future vision of the community, are those designations appropriate, do we want to combine those designations, and we'll work through that as we go through this process. In addition to the most visible aspect of your general plan, we also have the goals and policies. Goals and policies address every single topic area that I showed you, all 17 topic areas, a lot of times those are combined into different themes, but they'll address all of those. You can see how your current plan addresses those right now, your goals are, of course, more broad, and this is a land use goal, planning for ongoing growth and development of the community, and then your policies follow that up in terms of, you know, how do you do that? By a mix of housing options, and then there's a policy that your staff, your development community, you will follow as you get development that comes into the city, so that's kind of how that works. We will be going through a plan audit with your technical advisory committee, probably with you all as well, as we look at, are all of those goals and policies, are they still valid, do they need to be revised, do they need to be thrown away altogether, are there new things that need to, new policies, new goals, that's happening with trends in the world, trends in Lake Havasu that we need to put in there, so we'll be going through that audit through this process. Implementation plan, I always like to commend communities that have this implementation plan, it's not a requirement of the statute. What an implementation plan is, is a systematic way to implement your community's vision, it's things that you guys already do as a city, but it's put down in the, it's structured in the general plan of actions for each one of your topic areas, your theme areas, and usually there's some priorities or there's some timeframes associated with that, i.e., we're looking at this and we need to revise a component of our zoning code, and so should we do that? So we see that through the process, I'm not saying that we need to, but say we see that through the process, we put that down on paper as a priority, maybe one or a short-term task, and that's something that your staff could then look at and say, okay, let's do this, this will help implement our community's vision. So it's a great way to implement on top of rezonings, I always commend communities that do that, sometimes they're in your general plans, sometimes there's a, they're a side document or appendices, but it's another way to implement that community's vision, and it's a great idea to have that. Okay, I'm going to move on to process and schedule, so I'm going to take a breath for just a second, and I'm going to ask, we can, I can ask any questions, any questions at this point, Chairman, or just want me to keep rolling along?
Commissioners? Keep going.
Okay, all right. You guys, it's a little early, I think you guys need a little coffee or something. I can have Rusty come up and do some dance, if that's helpful, yeah, all right. There we go, smiles, good. Okay, so we want to have this process be fun too, so I know this is a formal presentation, and I'm on a podium and stuff like that, but I will tell you, it's my personality, I love to, you know, get into the community and we'll talk about some of the events, and have fun with this. I mean, this is your community, we want to have fun, we want to, we want to hear a lot of cool things, we've heard a lot of cool things, by the way, our Uber drivers back and forth, we have gotten so much community input already, just hearing lots of things from our drivers. Yes, oh, Chairman.
So the people that are chosen to the outside resources that you bring in that help with the general plan, are they the same categories when you do everybody's general plan? Does that make sense? Such as aviation or the water, or is it different for every town based on what the need is?
Yeah, Chairman Harris and Commissioner, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Wilson, yes, it's different. We have teaming partners that we're comfortable with, that we worked with, all of our teaming partners, we have a good relationship with, but we look, as we put in a proposal, we look at what's required, so some communities may only require land use and transportation, so we're not going to bring in an aviation expert for that. We looked at Havasu as we did our proposal, we looked at all the components and said, well, this is the team we want to put together, and we put that forward, so it can be very different.
And is that based off feedback, that when originally you're doing the proposal to the city, you said, okay, what do you feel your needs are currently, and this is what we'll put together, and that's how the proposal happens then?
Yes, and Mr. Chair and Vice Chair, and I may defer to the city on that, but the city goes forward and they put together a proposal, RFP, and they say, this is what we want, and as a consultant, we look through all of that and we digest it and we say, okay, this is what the city wants, we can ask a few questions during that process, and then we put in, you know, this is our proposal, based upon what the city wants, and then we go through, in this case, we went through an interview process, and we got to ask a few more questions and get a little bit more into it, and then ultimately, the city said, yes, we like this consultant group and this team, we're going to, we're going to go with this, this group, so, but if I didn't answer that, I will defer to city. Okay, all right. Cool, awesome, thank you, good questions. Okay, process and schedule, so as Mr. Gilbert said, we're well into the process at this point, you can see we have a, we have a lot of spreadsheets and we have calendars and all sorts of things, the planners really like that, Shelby really likes these, but we made this cartoon just for ease of seeing our different phases in the process, and you can see that there are five main phases, and they go about a year and a half from start to finish. So we're about through, and these are generalized, but we're about through our launch phase, which means we've updated, or we've created a designated webpage, I'll show you what that looks like, you've probably seen that. We've done our first questionnaire, we've started our kickoff meetings, city council, Planning Commission, we're doing those kind of kickoff meetings, we've gone into our discover phase, where we started to pull data, part of that process is getting, putting together an existing conditions report that we springboard off of into the general plan, so existing conditions for all of our topic areas, making sure that we have a baseline and an understanding, truth testing that through your department heads and your experts to make sure that we have a full understanding of where we're at today. So that's, that's getting close to being done, as we, you'll see the star move as we come back and give you updates throughout the process, the process is meant to have you involved throughout this, kickoff meetings as a commission and city council, we will update you along the way and make sure that you're involved in every piece of this process. Our envision and build components or phases, they also go a little concurrently, so you can see April through August and June through November. The reason for that, and I'll tell you a little bit more about public participation, envision is our public participation, our community input, that's the real crux of that, build is where we develop the plan, and they're, they go back and forth, they're iterative, and they go concurrent, because we get community input, we build the plan, we build parts of it, and then we take it back to the community and say, did we get this right? Yes, 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 no, this is, need to tweak this, and then we build, 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 input, 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 and then at the end of that build phase, we get into a 60-day review process. How many of you have been involved, just by show of hands, in the general plan update for last time or the time before? Couple, couple people. So you know, at a certain point in this process, pencils go down, so it's a statutory 60-day review period, that's where we have a draft plan, we put it on the project website, and we say, everybody comment on this, we'll probably do an open house to get, you know, people aware that it's out there and a lot of social media feeds, and we get those comments, and then we, at the end of that, we bring, we address that, we address all the comments, officially, and we bring that back to commission, and that will, that will go into our build and celebrate phase, where we go into the legislative process, and that's you guys, and we say, this is, this is our general plan, these are the comments that we got, this is how we address this, and we ask you for your recommendation of approval to city council. Goes to city council, and then again, it sits. So for populations of a certain growth and a certain threshold, it's, you require ratification by your voters, that was the case last time, that's the case this time, so the idea is council adopts, everybody's happy with it, community's been involved, then it sits for a period of four months, and it goes on your ballot in November, and the community must adopt it, so that's how that process works. Any questions, Mr. Chair, on that?
Nope.
Okay. All right, I want to give you, public participation is the most important part of this process, I keep saying community vision plan, and so if it's a community vision plan, we have to get as much community involved as possible. I say almost every time, the planners, we could write a beautiful plan for you and give it to you, and it will be meaningless if your community's not involved and it's not actually your community's vision, and it will sit on, sit on the shelf and it'll have to be amended all the time, because nobody's been involved in it. So we try from the very beginning, not only is it statutory required, you can see that, but it's just good planning practice to get everybody involved and to get the voice out there as much as we can. Will we get all, almost 60,000 people's voice? No, we won't, I'll tell you that right now, but that's our, that's our goal, we are going to try to get everyone to have a voice in this plan or have the opportunity to be able to comment. So you can see the statutory requirements there, that's, we built a public education plan, we call these differently, a PEP, we brought that to council last month, asked for their blessing on that, I'm going to show you what that looks like in the facets, it's a, it's a structure plan where it's, it can evolve, so we're asking for feedback on that, it'll evolve as we go, as will the project website, but that's the structure in our strategy for public engagement, and that's what it looks like. So public education plan, I believe that's posted on our webpage at this point, it was adopted by council. You can see that there are two key components of this, key participants, and you can see all those folks or boards, and then our key strategies, and you can see what that entails. I'm going to go through little bits and pieces of all of that. Okay, legislative groups, so who's involved here? We have our legislative folks, we have, and you, you guys are appointed, city council elected, you know this, you guys implement, city council gives, adopts, gives their direction, you are part of that process as well. Ultimately, we will come to you for a recommendation for approval to city council, and then council will have the option to adopt via resolution, and so those are the roles, regular updates for both bodies, and we want, we want very much for you guys to be involved in this process too, as community members, be ambassadors for the events that we have, Shelby will be sending you all sorts of things to get the word out, I'm sure she already has, we'd love for you to come to events and just be a part of the process. I'll talk about the steering committee as well, but that's, it's really the role that we, that you have as a planning and zoning commission, but then as a community member, we want you to absolutely be involved in the process as much as you can. We have two other groups that are, that are together, here are functional and our community groups, so TAC is Technical Advisory Committee, there are technical and functional experts, these are city departments, we're going to have our kickoff meeting with them later today, about 10:30. We had, we had thought about external agencies, but we're going to include those in another facet. This has been selected by your project team, their main role will be to look at that existing conditions report, make sure that it's accurate, truth-tested, worded, how the city wants that to be worded, and then looking at the plan elements of their functional expertise. They too will be ambassadors in the process, we'll ask them to be involved through their circles of influence, please get the word out on this, so kind of pushing that out in their influence circles as well. And then our general plan steering committee, so this is, this is a application, a membership consisting of 11 community members, we had an application process on our website, I think we pulled down about 29 applications, the city and the project team are going through a selection process on that, that'll eventually go, at least a briefing to the city council, so they'll be involved in appointing that committee as well, and then we'll have a kickoff with them near the end of May or early June. So there are the heartbeat of the plan in terms of our community members, of course, you guys are too, you're all residents, but they'll be our community members, different professions, mom and pops, all different, you know, we're trying to get a broad base of representation of the community on that group as well. They will be ambassadors as well, we'll ask them, we'll have lots of different exercises and interaction, I know your alternates were excited about having some sort of interaction event and workshop today, but we won't do that today, but we'll be doing that with your steering committee, we'll do that with you as we go, so they'll be able to get their hands dirty and get involved in that process, not really, no dirty hands, it's ink, ink and paper cuts is usually all that happens. So those are our two groups that we have, and then we have just members at large, and what we do in our process, we like to do, we call them listening sessions, there are interviews, we have a few guiding questions, but generally, we just let people, we educate people in these sessions, and it's a deep dive into, you know, what do you, what's working, what's not working, what do you see for the future, those are generally some of our questions. We've, we have this list that has groups, your project team is coming up with actual names, contacts, people that we must talk to. to. We throw that out to you guys as well. If, if there are folks that you know that we must talk to or organizations, please let Shelby or, or Chris know, so that we can get those on the list and it's open to everybody. I mean, we, we have a set number, but I always say, it doesn't, just, let's just get out there and start talking to people. We don't want to cap that. Whoever wants to talk to us in this manner, great. We, we try to get different ways for people to participate and sometimes people just like a one-on-one. So. Project branding. So, here's what the website looks like. We've worked with your public engagement officer, with the project team, looking at colors and fonts and coming up with a tagline, shaping our future, and a, and a little bit of a logo there. There's some swag in the back for people to, for you guys to, to grab if you want. One of the, one of the reasons we do that is, we want to have a unifying brand all the way through the process. So, people, as we go to events and people are, are seeing this process, they kind of see the same sort of thing. And then, during that waiting period before it goes on the ballot, we hope that, you know, we can't do anything anymore, we're not lobbying, but we hope people have good memories of that and maybe they have a chip clip. And they're, oh yeah, I remember this process. You know, so it, it's kind of fun. The website is, is up. It's launched. Maybe you've been to the website. There's, it's a, it's a bunch of information. It'll host our questionnaires. It'll eventually host the, the draft plan, so you'll be able to see it directly on there. There's resources on there, the existing plan, the public education plan. You'll see eventually, the existing conditions report will be on there as well. We will advertise or host, not host, but we'll have different events that we'll, we'll publish on this site, upcoming events that will direct people to hear for more information. Through all the different events, and I'll show you, we, we want to do in-person, but we also like to do virtual. If, if people are not, not able to come in person, or they're out of town, or for whatever reason, they just want to be virtual, we do both. So, the virtual platform will be hosted on this webpage as well, so people can have participation in those workshops through this website. So, take a look at this. You have an ability to sign up on this and get regular updates as well. So, great web, website and branded in the, in the, the form of, of what we're, what we're doing moving forward. Okay. So, we do have that first questionnaire up and running. We, I, we have almost 500 respondents on that already, as of the 29th. It was like 459 or something. It's incredible. I mean, it's just, I, I always hope to have great numbers and, and sometimes it's just such a struggle. But, we've, we've heard, we've, we've already gotten almost 500. It'll be up until the, this is the first questionnaire, so it'll be up until June. So, still opportunity to, to take that. Very simple, five-minute, less than five minutes, you can just kind of go through it. Getting an idea of what people, again, you know, like, what they think needs to be improved, what they want to see for the future, that vision statement's on there. Does that resonate with people? Are there things that are missing from that? So, an easy way to do that. I think we have flyers in the back, if you need, need them to take out and distribute for this questionnaire. This questionnaire will help build, build the first workshop. So, responses from this will then go into that workshop. And, and again, well, it'll help feed and, and build that plan. We also have the informational brochure, I guess. And we, and we have copies of that in the back as well. It goes through a lot of what I'm saying right now for people, you know, what is this general plan and what's the timeframe and all that kind of stuff as well. So, those are available for you as well. Okay. All right. So, strategy is inclusive engagement. I talked about this. We want to include everyone. We want to get everyone's voice the best that we can, give everyone an opportunity to participate in this. So, we have a series of workshops that will happen during the summer. But, we'll, and, and they'll be in-person and virtual. So, we'll have our visioning, and these build upon each other. So, our visioning workshop, where we'll, we'll be asking a lot of questions about the, the vision statement, possibly guiding principles. We will get into some, what does it mean to have a mixture of uses? What does this look like? And, and start getting people educated about the land use designations. And what does it mean to say, commercial office? And what might that look like? And where might that be appropriate? So, we'll start getting that, into that for the workshop. There'll be some hands-on tactile things that people can do. That will then build into our scenario workshop, where we'll really start getting into the, that land use map. And, you know, different scenarios of, you know, do we keep it the same? Do we make it more intense or dense? Do we make it less intense or dense? I mean, that's very simple. But, different scenarios of what that could look like. We'll have the open house near the end of the process during the 60-day. That'll be another way for people to participate, where we'll have the plan available and different boards for people to kind of, at a glance, take a look at what's in the plan. And ability to come in-person and be able to, to give input into that draft plan. I mentioned in-person, virtual. We are going to, and we have already started to distribute things via e-list, via social media, news releases, any other platform that you guys can think of, that we can get the word out, let us know. We, we, we want to get the word out on all of these different things as, as best we can. Each one of the workshops will start with a bit of an educational presentation. So, we'll run people through where the process is and what is a general plan. And then we'll have this interactive kind of workshop sort of thing. Employing different things, modeling, 3D mapping. We like to do 2D pictures like you see, but then 3D mapping as well, so people can start to see, what does that actually look like? Sketches of buildings and, oh, okay, yeah, I can kind of get that a little bit better. Visual preference is a big deal in, in our world, where we, we get to show people, you know, if, if you look at, you know, this type of land use, these are some options of what it can look like. You know, what resonates with you? What resonates for Lake Havasu City? In, in different, in different designations? What, you know, what does this start to mean as a conceptual, as people come in and develop? You know, what is the community really looking for? All right. Drop-in events. I like to just show this picture, because in addition to the, the formal workshops, we, we have already started as a project team. Sometimes you'll see city staff, sometimes you'll see consultant staff, sometimes you'll see both of us. But, we want to get out to where people are. So, different events that are happening that have Lake Havasu residents at, I mean, it's great to be at events that, you know, a lot of visitors are at, but we're really trying to hone this into where visitors are. I mean, excuse me, where residents are. So, you can see a couple of different events here that we've done in Arizona. One was in Navajo County, where we went out to a Fourth of July event in Joseph City. It was awesome. So, lots of people, lots of kids visited. We got a lot of input there. Went to the library up there in Winslow and, and again, got a lot of people, just traffic. Mesa, we ended up going to a couple Albertson's grocery stores and just caught people in and out. It was, it was a, it was unbelievable, the comments that we had and, and people that just were like, what, what are you doing? And what's that? Oh, I want to get that swag. I really like that, you know, hat. And so, just kind of fun events where we get out to people and, and just start educating about the process and, you know, pushing some of the inter, interactive stuff and, and getting people aware of this process. So, anything that you're aware of, any HOAs or different things that you guys know, let us know and we'll, we'll try to hit those as well. All right. Any questions on public engagement? Mr. Chair?
Nope. Anybody?
Okay. Oh.
Mr. Annett.
So, I don't want to back up too far, but you've mentioned the annual 500 survey. Have you been excited about that? Is that a good number for our population and what you've seen in the past?
Yes. So, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, alternates, it, it really, it really ranges. So, I would, I would say, 5% of your population in general plan updates, we, we get, we're, we're, we're happy. If we get 10% of the population and we show engagement numbers of that, it's like, woo! You know, and you, and you might think that's really low, but it, I mean, we, we try and try and try to get, you know, folks to participate in all different ways. And sometimes, some communities, it's great and some, some, some it's not. But, to answer the specific question, we hardly ever see that number in questionnaires. So, I, I see good things for this process, for people getting involved. Some communities like to get involved, some communities, working in counties, it's really difficult. People don't, they don't get it. So, we, we get out there and we get, if we get a 5% or a 10% number overall, we're excited. I, I see that number being much larger in Havasu. That's a great, great number for a questionnaire. Especially the first initial questionnaire, when really, nobody knows what this is. So, I'm, and, and that's a, that's on behalf of your staff and your city that is really getting the word out. Shelby in particular, I think she's gone out and put up things and, and gone to businesses and, and just hit the streets. So, really, really appreciate that. So.
Mr. Annett again. So, we can get it on the record.
So, my question was simply, the almost 500 surveys that were completed and turned in, how does that compare to other cities that have done it? And how does that compare to our population expectations?
Mr. Chairman, it, it's higher. I, I would say, we typically get in the, the range of a first questionnaire in a city of, of this size or any city, about 100 to 250. So, and this, this questionnaire is open for another month, two months. So, it's great. It's a great number. So, I, I think the engagement and the level of engagement in Lake Havasu City, I, I'm very optimistic that there's going to be a lot. And we hear, like I had mentioned, in our Uber drives, it, just a lot of, lot of interest. What are you doing? Okay. Yeah, we want to be, you know, and we give out the, we give out flyers and, and things for, for the Uber. Oh, we're gonna bring this to our networking event and, and get the word out. So, it, it's great and it's, it's above and beyond, absolutely. I commend you for that.
Mr. Stevenson, you have a question?
Terry, one of the challenges with Lake Havasu is, is we're a unique community with really three identities. Summer people, winter people, and year-round people. How, how do we get input from all three segments, when you're really focusing in kind of the summer months, on, on your workshops and your community outreaches? How do we, and are we looking for out, for input from those other segments that are maybe part-time residents?
So, that, that's a great question, Mr. Chair. And, yes, I would say, we're looking for input from all residents. And that's one of the strategies of, you know, why we do in-person and virtual. This is a process that, that, you know, is spanning the summer. We, we know it's hot, people go on vacations. We're trying to push that out there, so that people can be involved, even if they're not here. We, we want to get seasonal visitors, our residents, people that, that live here, we want to give them the opportunity to be involved in this process. This process spans over the course of a, of a year and a half. So, we hope that, you know, people will be here. And, and that's why we give different types of engagement. So, listening sessions, questionnaires, events, drop-in events. So, if we know that there are other events that we're not, let me put it this way, we do participation tracking through this process. Sometimes that's a scary thing. But, we do that for a reason. We have demographics and we, we try to see where we're getting, where we're getting the word from. Are we getting the younger generation? Are we getting anyone? Okay, well, let's, we gotta hit some schools. Are we getting, you know, a seasonal population? Okay, how do we get that? So, we strategize as a project team, as we start to look at the numbers and we give you guys updates. We'll come and, and give you updates along the way and say, this is where we're at and this is who we're hearing from. And then we try to strategize to get those, those population sectors. So, it's a, it's a, that's a long-winded question, but I think it's important. And that's why we have a broad strategy to try to get as many voices as possible. It's a challenge. It's a challenge. Been doing this for almost 30 years and, and I can tell you, I'm excited. I'm excited about the, the input we've already gotten in Lake Havasu. And I, I'm, I'm up, we're up for the challenge. So.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, the, the, the survey was up in April, so we were still, in that early period, we're still catching some of the winter crowd that hasn't quite left yet. So, we've already exposed it to, to them to a certain degree, maybe not fully yet, because as word's spreading, but they have had an opportunity so far to comment before leaving town.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, again, we, we would ask you all, as ambassadors, you know a lot of folks, you have circles of influence. Get the word out to folks before they leave. I mean, it's, it's start, it's hot, maybe they already left. But, get the word out. You guys, you have great networks. So, we're, you as ambassadors are very, very important to us. Okay. Any other questions for that? Okay. All right. Next steps. So, it's May, right? So, we're, we're getting, we're finalizing our existing conditions report. We'll, we'll get that finalized and out to our technical advisory committee to, to truth-test and make sure that it's all good. That'll be published on our website. We're starting those listening sessions or interviews. Those can be in-person, those can be virtual, telephonic, whatever, whatever works and is most convenient for folks. We'll start those in May. It'll probably end up going through the summer. We'll just see what we get. It's, it's, we don't have to do them all at once, so we'll just see how we, we get those. And they'll be offered throughout different events, so people can say, oh, yeah, I want to do an interview, I want to talk to you guys. We should find out fairly soon who our, our, our steering committee is. We'll do a kickoff meeting with them at the end of May, early June. And then we start getting into those workshops. Have not planned exactly the day or the month, but we'll be doing that first set of visioning workshops and then into the scenario workshops during those summer months, getting out to different community events through the drop-in events. And then, at the end of that phase, we'll come back to commission, also the city council, and give you an update of where we're at. There'll also be a recap that we'll put on the website that says, you know, how many people have we heard from? Where did we hear from? And just kind of a picturesque summary or a recap that people can look at as well. So, I think, I think that's the end of my presentation. So, you can smile now. Okay. I was gonna say, I have 83 more slides. Are you guys, okay. All right.
Any questions? Anybody? Go ahead, Jake, Mr. Thornton.
I think that was an amazing presentation, probably one of the best ones I've seen on this podium. That was, that was really good. I love to see your passion for it. And you have an amazing team here with the, with the city. And I think they share the same vision. So, I think, I'm glad that you're here to be able to do this with us. And thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
How many times will you come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission throughout this process with different topics and whatnot?
So, I, I'll answer that. I'll queue it up and then I'm gonna pitch it over to Shelby or Chris. I, I think we have it scoped in for every phase, so kickoff and then two more times and then our, the, the hearing process, so the recommendation. So I believe there's four periods that, that I personally will be here, that you'll see me. But then I, I believe, and I'm going to queue it over to Mr. Gilbert, there may be times that, that they're giving you presentations on general plan that we're not here.
Yeah, I don't have the, the schedule in front of me, but the number of in-person visits by our consultants has a certain limit to it that was contractual. So there could be additional updates that we can give in between when they're not here, but I can assure you that planning commissioner will be involved in the process throughout.
I guess my, my question focuses more on how much involvement should we be in attendance to workshops and public events and open houses? Or is it going to be redundant because you're bringing it here? I kind of asked them this last week and so I wanted to know how much involvement outside of here should we participate in to be able to be as helpful as possible? Is that a better way of asking that? Not so much as how much you're here, but how much outside of here should we participate in?
Perfect. Mr. Chair and Vice Chair, we try not to make it redundant for you. In, in this venue, it's, it's difficult to have a, a workshop. So we would ask if you're able to, to come to those workshops as well and participate. So what you will be hearing in this venue will be summaries of what we're doing. We absolutely will ask for your input and, and you guys talk, but you won't be doing the activities that we do in a workshop per se.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm, just.
Mr. Gilbert.
Can you hear me? If I may add, as far as involvement, anything that the planning commissioners wish to do to encourage people to visit our website and leave their comments would be positive. I know our staff is getting out and, and visiting with community groups whenever we get the opportunity, but the commission may know, individual members may know a community groups meeting and, and if you're a member of those groups, you want to take some of the, some of the handout slips that have the website Q code on it, QR code and website address, that would be helpful to get word out to, the more people that know about it and can pass word on, the better.
I mean, as far as even your community groups like, you know, the Elks or the Board of Realtors, stuff like that, take a handful of stuff to them.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Earl.
I just want to mention, I was on the Planning and Zoning in Indio, California when they did their general plan last time, and those meetings are very helpful if you go and just sit and listen because they can't tell you every single comment that you're hearing, but you really just sitting and observing the people coming in and I like this, I, you can hear and get a feel for what they're looking for. So as many of them as we can go to is probably a good thing, even if we don't have anything to say, we can listen because they're going to be summarizing, but you actually get a feel for the room and what they're looking at and what they're actually commenting on for that. And, and the flyers are great because I've already handed out over 100 of them because they're, I've got my community groups I'm in and they're being very well received. People are very interested in getting the information, so.
Chair, all of those events too will be quorumed. We'll work with the city council or the city clerk's office, so you guys can feel free to show up and participate in everything and it'll be noted as, as a potential quorum that you guys are maybe there. So it's, there's no conflict there.
I'm sure you keep us on the email list.
Yes, yes, I will keep you guys updated when we have dates.
Any other questions? Ms. Medley.
More of a comment than a question, but Jim just brought up the Elks Lodge. So we have 4,700 members here in Lake Havasu and we would be happy to host something if you want to schedule something through us and use our website as well.
Absolutely.
That would be a great venue.
Fantastic. Thank you. Yes.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Might be a little premature and a little too specific, but since we have our aviation expert here and this is a 10-year general plan, is there any consideration or, or thinking about the potential of, of making Lake Havasu's aviation facility a Class Delta or a towered airport?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I would ask that question of you because that airport, you are in such a good position now where that airport is and how the development is already in the area. You're in such a good position now to have a long-range plan for that airport, to make that airport whatever you want. It probably does not have the operations per year right now to qualify for an FAA tower or a contract tower. I'm going through the same process with the city of Buckeye right now, but same emphasis that I told Buckeye, now's the time for you to, and I've talked to General Kane about this already at the airport, now's the time to look at and see how you want that airport to support the area 10 years from now or 15 years from now because it's going to grow.
If we ever want commercial service, that's how we get it.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. And now's the time to do it before the city moves north to get closer to the airport. Now's the time.
It'll also generate a whole lot more military traffic.
It will and, and I'm, I use you guys as example all the time because I've, I've seen a picture on Google with an F-35 sitting on the ramp and, and that was an emergency issue here, but the runway here qualifies for military operations for fighter-type aircraft. And, and that in, in and of itself is, is a long way to go to get other military contracts. Yes, sir. It absolutely is. It is. So it's, it's whatever you want to do with that airport, now's the time to do it and, and it's.
Please emphasize that.
All right, I will continue. I will continue to talk about that. Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, that's an, that's an awesome, we're planning for land uses around the, the airport as part of this process, but that's also a, an opportunity for an action item, implementation. So thinking ahead as we get through this plan, you know, maybe there's a, a area plan or, or some sort of planning effort that needs to happen for that, a specific area plan for that airport area or an update to the master plan. That's something that can go into this plan as, as something that this community wants. So start thinking about that.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your presentation.
Yes.
I'll turn it back over to Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was a great presentation from our consultants. Regarding future meeting, the next meeting scheduled for May 21st is canceled due to no items. Oh, I think we still have the call to the public.
I'm not done yet.
Do you want me to finish the future meeting? Okay. We do have some cases that are scheduled, look like they will be moving forward on June 4th though for that meeting, so be prepared for, to be available for that.
I will not be here on the June 4th meeting. I will be absent. All right, we are now at the call to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the commission on any subject whatsoever, now is the time to come to the podium. Anybody at all? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Please understand that we may not respond. I'm sorry?
My name is Bonnie Toy.
Bonnie Schwartz, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. I just wanted to make a recommendation and suggestion to the Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to EDA requirements of different buildings and complexes and how things are growing through our city. I noticed one day when I was walking up Swanson Avenue that an apartment complex or condo complex, whatever it is, 2060, Swa, uh, Swanson, it have absolutely no handicap parking there at all. The curbs go up the whole way, all around the whole complex. There's another place right down, it's brand new complex. There's another place down the street from there on Swanson, I forget the exact number. It's across from Albertson's. And again, they have no handicap parking access to that whole facility. And recently, when I was there, the sidewalk was barely wide enough. They added fencing, like porch fencing to the apartment or condo or whatever they are areas. Really nice, but it would make it uncomfortable for anyone who is in a wheelchair to have to use it. Well, they would be uncomfortable anyway because there is no handicap parking. They would literally, somebody would have to pull the wheelchair up to get up onto the sidewalk. And I know like businesses, like the family, the cornerstone, um, cornerstone family doctor, the doctor, unmaskete, that whole parking lot, the, where doctor, the LabCorp is, that parking lot is a total mess. It was designed over 20 years ago, not intended for medical businesses at all and the increase of their clientele and trying to look into the future, I understand is difficult, but since the last, I don't even know how many years, medical changes all the time, even maybe the American Disability Association may be not even kept up with people's different abilities or unable, disabilities, whatever. I'm a slow walker, so walking across a crosswalk that has a timer on it, I don't think I've ever made it across in the 30 seconds or 25 seconds that it gives me and I have to impede traffic in the process, which I hate doing, but I, I do and it's, I do it to the best of my ability, but I would just like to suggest that the city look further into being more handicap accessible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.